Okay, the time is 7:43 PM and we are reconvened in open session. We have no action on closed session items, so we will proceed into the review portion of our agenda. Item 6A, we will review the proposed revised vision statement and board developed district goals and objectives. Who do we have? Do we have someone presenting this? Ms. Martinez?
Good evening. During the May Board Session, Ms. James reviewed the board-developed goals and objectives, as well as the supporting documents and policies that we'll discuss a little bit further down the agenda. The goals and objectives were developed by the board members in the Vision and Planning Committee and then through a team-building activity with the full board. As they processed the visionary needs assessment and organized the board team-building exercise in March. That led to the revision of the vision of what education should be like in Fort Bend and combined the ideas generated in these activities, using word webs and sorting and categorizing activities to take all of the feedback from the stakeholders in our community over this school year. The goals are intended to reflect the board's vision of the future of teaching and learning in Fort Bend and the community's expected qualities of a Fort Bend ISD graduate, otherwise referred to as Fort Bend ISD 2.0. This document includes the revised vision, four goals each supported by objectives and critical items that the staff will work on with the board to prioritize and develop the SMART goals and the district action plan. And the new vision, I'd like to point out, is Fort Bend ISD will graduate students who exhibit the attributes of the district's profile of a graduate. And then the four board goals are there for your review, supported by objectives in each area.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Do we have questions or comments by the board members? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And in addition to that, our board policy portion under 6B will be proposed revisions to board policy AE Local and EA Local. Do you want to continue on with that, Ms. Martinez?
I would be glad to, thank you. Policy AE Local was revised to host the new profile of a graduate and the foundational operational principles to support the board's educational philosophy. So you'll see that there is an updated purpose included in this revision, and it includes wording about honoring our mission, vision, core beliefs, and commitments while meeting the district goals through scalable systems that operate with effective change management. That was an important part of the conversation in the work, was to ensure attention to effective change management. We also reordered the policy somewhat so that the mission is before the vision and updated the vision to state, as I previously indicated, the revised vision, stating that Fort Bend ISD will graduate students who exhibit the attributes of the district's profile of a graduate. So in essence, this policy was changed to provide that home for the profile of a graduate and to provide the foundational operational principles that were added to ensure the concept of the unbiased, aligned, written, taught, and tested curriculum. The purpose of this, of the section in EA Local, as we made those changes and revisions for your consideration, it was previously named instructional goals and objectives, and it included the district's theory of action. During this review process, this policy was renamed "Theory of Action" as the board members recognized that our organization is ready for an enterprise-level theory of action, which will inform the superintendent and our staff and organization on how to achieve the district goals developed by the board. We did revise the purpose section to include reference to the core beliefs and commitments and to the profile of a graduate, as well as the board-adopted goals and objectives as our governing documents. That was not included in the previous board policy. We also made reference to the district goals and objectives as a guide to the systems upon which the administration shall develop our SMART goals and the district's district action plan. So in a nutshell, that tells you the changes that we've made based on the work of the Vision and Planning Committee and the board.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Do we have questions or comments? Mrs. James, did you have anything to add to that?
No, thank you, Mrs. Martinez. She did a great job. I'd just point out to the board, I don't know, the versions in the board book are correct, but the versions in one of the early memos that went out were not the revised version. So I just wanted to clarify that, depending what people are looking at. Don't get your documents mixed up. So what's in the board book is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 6C, the 2014 Bond Program. We're going to review bond bid package number 14 with Hightower High School and Marshall High School renovations. Oh, is that the? Okay, yeah, let's do this next. It's not specifically on the agenda, but in light of the new goals, we are considering changing how we present the agenda to the board in order to align them, align the agenda items with the board-adopted goals and objectives, provided that we do adopt the board's goals and objectives as presented. So you'll see at your seat, this is a mock-up or a sample of what this agenda, the June 12th agenda, would look like if we changed it and aligned each of the items with the board goals and objectives, with a separate section called Board Governance that would be sort of a catch-all section for anything that didn't specifically go under a particular board goal. I wanted us to take an opportunity to look at this, go over it, provide feedback, see if this is what you had in mind, see if this is something you would be comfortable with, make recommendations for changes. Dr. Dupree, did you want to say anything about this or go through it?
No, I think this real, the only thing I would say is you can clearly see the lettered areas are the various board goals, and we also have, based on the policy, a section on leadership development, a section on continuous improvement, and a section on scalable systems. One of the reasons we wanted you to see this is because in the event, probably, we have a section on this one that says finance, so those are areas that would fall under scalable systems because they're operational in nature. But one of the differences that the board would see is if, and I just want to draw your attention as you give Mrs. Tosan and me feedback, is policy purchases over 50,000 could potentially be split up under these various sections, as opposed to grouped the way you're accustomed to seeing them. So we just wanted you to process through, is that a meaningful, helpful way? Would you like to see it that way? Or, I mean, we wanted your guidance, basically your feedback. So you can take this with you, shoot me an email, or give me a call, you know, as you'd like to, you know, look at and give us any feedback on it.
Mr. Rice?
Well, I've already processed it, and I love it.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Well, I look at it, and I like it too, because it makes sure that we're talking about the things that are important to us, because what jumps out at me is you've got very little, very few things under the board goal sections and a whole, whole lot under everything, under the everything else section. So not, and I don't want us to solve this by getting creative about how these things might fit in here. I would like us to just be intentional that the things we're doing and spending money on and spending effort and spending time and energy on are really aligned with what our goals are, which I'm sure is the intent in reorganizing it like this. So I'm a fan.
And one of the things I said to them, kind of along those lines, Grail, is that I wanted to challenge all of us to either ensure that the things we're discussing or spending money on do align under a goal, a board goal. Or if they don't, if it doesn't easily fit, then, as Mrs. James said, is this something we should be talking about? Is this something we should be spending money on? And if it is, then we should be able to articulate why, or where it fits, or why it fits where it fits. So I think it kind of challenges all of us to maybe look at what we're doing a little bit differently, and especially going into some of these, the changes we're going to have to make in our budget. This may be a good way for us to ensure that the things we're doing really are in alignment with our goals, so. Okay, thank you. Any other feedback, please do call Dr. Dupree. Okay, now, moving on to the 2014 Bond Program. Bid package 14, Hightower and Marshall High School renovations.
Yes, ma'am, President. What we're bringing to you is, we're asking for approval for contractors to do work at Hightower and Marshall High School with a combined budget of $4,625,000. And on this particular bid package, the original budget was a little over 12 million, and the projected budget is just right under $7,68,689.97. And so we have a surplus in this particular bid package that we would like to transfer into program contingency. One of the contributing reasons for this was that the way that these projects were budgeted, both of them had roof work that was to be done, but the way that they were budgeted, they were budgeted to go in and do repairs. Upon looking at it, as we do with all projects, and wanting to make sure we utilize the money the best we can, we found that if we just went in and did the repairs as were stated, we would not end up with any type of warranty. And so the design team came up with a system, which is called an ACHLINC system, which is a roof-applied coating that can go on the roof and give us a 20-year warranty. And we felt that this was the way to go, and we went ahead and bid the project out in that manner, and pricing was very favorable. In addition, we also had air handler units that still have seven to 10 years of life, so we didn't see that we needed to go in and replace those. You may recall that we came back with an early package for Marshall where we had a chiller that had failed, and we're looking at replacing it this summer. Well, since this project bid and we, you know, were waiting just to come in and have it awarded, we have had two other chillers that failed. These are water-cooled chillers, they're 15 years old, and a water-cooled chiller, you know, should, with good preventive maintenance, last, you know, 20 to 30 years. Obviously, that tells you a story. We, you know, what we're doing now is we've already started that, and then with all of our new equipment, it's coming in, and we have a preventive maintenance plan in place so that we can go in and do the annuals and keep these things and get as much life as we can out of them.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees? Mrs. James?
Well, thank you, Mr. Perez. I think you answered my questions, because I was concerned that we would spend money on replacing chillers that have failed due to lack of maintenance without having a good maintenance plan in place. So thank you for sharing that you have addressed that. And I gather from reading the memo and from hearing you that the only part of this, these original projects that we aren't doing is the roof, and it's because we're doing that other sealant system instead. Is there, is there something else that's not being done that I went?
Yes, ma'am, there was some switchgear at the stadium that we checked, and it was, it was operable, it's got plenty of life. And then, like I said, the air handler units that were also checked and still have about seven to 10 years of life.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Item C2 is a proposed commitment letter between Fort Bend and the Fort Bend County MUD District Number 137. Do we have questions or comments about this item? Okay. Moving on to item C3, the proposed entry project budget transfer and additional construction and design contingency funding. Questions from the trustees? Okay, Mrs. James?
Yeah, so I had a question on this. So these are some extra piers needed to be drilled. Let me see, I did some math. I think the additional cost was $646,000, is that right?
Ms. James, actually, the cost for the piers was covered under the existing contingency that we have, and the actual cost was $866,756. You know, that's the cost for the, for the work on the piers. And so we made every attempt that we could, as we went through this project, to work within the contingency amount that we had, but at this point, in order to finish out the project, we need to bring in $500,000 from program contingency, and then we're looking at transferring $146,055 from the site development line item that y'all had previously approved, putting that into contingency, and $35,569 that would go into the design contingency based on if we were to go ahead and use all this up, which we're hoping we don't, but if we were, you know, then we would have room for the design contingency. But the actual amount coming out from program would be $500,000.
Okay, so how far along are we in this project?
It, we will be finishing this by August.
Oh, yeah, okay, so that's on the time schedule, but like percent construction is, you know, you do it by the time, the timeline versus the amount of work dollars of work done?
I don't have that figure right off the top of my head, I can get that to you.
Okay, I'm just wondering, and then my follow-up question to that, which maybe you can get as well, is then, if we go back and look at the total budget, then what's our contingency percentage overall on this project? If we're adding $500,000 to contingency, I'd just like to know what the updated overall budget is.
The construction contingency for this project is approximately 6.9%.
Now, or with this added?
Now.
With this added?
With, yes, ma'am, with this added.
With this add?
Correct.
And it was originally?
5%.
5%. We start at 5%, so we're at about 7%.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. James. Moving on to item D, under instruction, we're going to review the low attendance waiver for January 18th, 2017. Did I miss something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry, four, I crossed it off, and I didn't do it. So the proposed budget amendment regarding the 2014 Bond Program contingency. Questions? Mrs. James?
Okay, so I'm trying to put all this together. You got in this gen item that there's, as of April, there was $6.2 million surplus forecast, and does that include your, the Marshall and Hightower numbers that were in earlier gen item?
No, ma'am, it does not.
So, okay, so that's in our favor, right?
Yes, ma'am, and just to explain, we, this 6.2, we do this quarterly, so, you know, every day as we're moving, it's fluid.
Right.
And all, so the 7.1 million, and depending on what change orders have gone through or whatever, you know, could, it wouldn't be the exact number, but we are trending to the positive.
Okay, so I'm confused, because you're saying the $6.2 million does, does not include the Marshall and Hightower, but then, but then, in this column of numbers that's listed here, you start at 1.8 and add the Marshall, and, right? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, you are, and, but this number is, until action is taken, we do not include it in this bottom number. Once action is taken, when we look at this number in the next quarter, then that, that would be included.
Okay, when you say this number, which number are you referring to?
The 6.2 million. As we're doing the projection, we don't want to project anything that has not been acted on.
So then, maybe my question is, what's the difference between the 6.2 million and the 1.8? Why do they start at two different places?
The 1.8 is where we were with program contingency as of April 17th. And then, based on action that would be taken next week, with everything that's going in, we would increase that 1.8 to 7.182. The, this bottom part is just a projection and really does not tie directly into these numbers, other than, you know, once we do that, the projection at that time. But right now, those two numbers are just not, I mean, you can't add that right on end and come up with, you know, 14 million or whatever, because it's, it's a number that's fluid every day as we're working through the bond.
So, so maybe my, the answer to my question is that the 6.2 million is a projection out through the rest of the bond program, and that's just a, it's just a number?
Yes, ma'am, it's projected out through 2019.
Okay. Whereas, the column of numbers is a, kind of where we are now, based on the contracts we have in place.
That is correct.
And what the board's approved.
Yes.
And that's why you've got the, okay. And that's why you've got the Hightower and Marshall in there now.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. James. Now, we will look at the low attendance waiver for January 18th, 2017. Is there anything to present on this? Okay. Do we have questions? Next, we have a couple of agreements. Agreement between Fort Bend and Baker Ripley to establish a full-day pre-K program expansion. Do we have questions on this? Mrs. James?
The education complex, where, what is that? Is that over by the Design and Construction Building? Is that what that's called?
It's over there in the PHS, that's, that's the.
By progressive high school.
Yeah, that's where it is, right there. Thank you. And next is the agreement between Fort Bend and universities for placement of LSSP's interns at the district campuses. Do you have questions about this one? Okay. Moving on to finance items. Did you have a question?
On the finance one.
Okay. So the first is going to be the proposed 2017-18 general fund, debt service fund, and child nutrition fund budget. Mrs. James?
Well, I know we talked about this in the public hearing, but I'm just going to throw out another question out there. I've been thinking about it in the last hour or so. What's the, I'd like to know, if you could find out for us, what is the, how many years have we gone without campus budget increases or department budget increases? And then my follow-up secondary question to that is, how do these budgets adjust with the number of students? So if a campus has more students or less students, is it done on a per-student basis, or how do we, how do we do that?
I can answer a part of that question, Mrs. James.
I don't know that it's on.
Yes, it is on.
Okay.
The campus budgets are based on an allotment per pupil, and when the campus enrollment increases, the dollar amount that each campus also increases. Conversely, if the enrollment goes down, that number decreases. What I don't have off the top of my head is the actual amount of those units that we allocate out, but we can provide that, that that has not changed over the last three years.
So I don't necessarily need that level of detail. I just wanted to understand that it fluctuates with the, with the number of students. So when you say the campus budgets have not changed, it's because the percentage of the total allotment has not changed?
That is correct, but it actually increases or decreases with enrollment.
Okay.
The last time we made a change in the allocation per student was 1415.
1415, so 15, 16, 16, 17, that's two years, so this would be a third year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next is the proposed amendment of the committed fund balance. Do we have questions on this one? Mrs. James?
You guys just thought I was on vacation this week, but I was not, apparently. I forgot all the questions. So my question on this is, if we, I think you answered my one question earlier, which was the 1.5 million in the transportation is going to the unassigned fund balance, is that correct?
There's a couple ways you could look at it. You could look at it as either going to unassigned or going in, just transferring over to the, be part of the 14 million for economic stabilization.
Okay, so, well, then, maybe, I don't, I'm not quite sure how to understand then, the, is there a difference between what is in these committed funds and what's just in the, what's assigned or unassigned?
Well, the assigned is specifically the amounts for the purchase orders and such that we, that we spoke about before. The, in terms of the difference in committed versus the unassigned, the committed are the things that we're actually, you know, setting out there, saying that we're going to commit a certain amount of fund balance for these, for these categories in case we need them. We had the transportation set up in case, but we didn't have to, and we felt we definitely could move that with that 1.5. We have the 4.5 million in there, and we've had it in there for a couple of years because we have the new schools coming online, but we still try to build into the budget, you know, the best we can, knowing that that's happening and we planned for that. And so now, we think we have that covered, and so now, we're holding, holding that over because we have a couple more campuses. If we didn't, we would probably recommend that that, that get put aside as well. And so there's really, all of those things, you know, could be put into unassigned if we, if we didn't. This is just a way for us to, I don't want to use the term designate, because they kind of threw out that term, this is a way for us to commit fund balance in a way to keep it out of unassigned, because I think if unassigned does get too big, then that is something that I think that the states had their eye on in terms of things that they could look to for schools to balance their budgets.
Okay, so, this chart is a little bit different than the chart that you showed us earlier, in, when you listed the committed and non-committed, and that's why I'm a little confused. So maybe my sentence goes back, maybe, maybe it goes back to the sentence in the second paragraph there, and I'm trying to understand the board's authority versus the superintendent's authority. So it says, "The Board of Trustees has retained the authority to commit fund balance and has authorized the superintendent to assign fund balance." Maybe I don't know the difference between committing and assigning.
Right, so the assigned fund balance is the, is the purchase orders that we've, that we've talked about. So whenever those purchase orders roll over from the prior year, that'll come in as an assignment of fund balance. Now, the board will actually see that and does, take action to approve it whenever the budget amendment is brought forward in, in September, as, as part of our, our normal course of business. But that's really the only thing we put into the assigned category.
Okay, and so, did, any, any expenditure coming out of these funds, even if they're, if we relabel the money, then it comes back to the board in order to be spent, or it is spent?
It would, it would come back to the, to the board.
Right, but not necessarily the economic stabilization fund, because that's already been, money has already been approved in the budget to come out of that fund.
That's correct, and hopefully, we won't, we won't use that, that whole, you know, 11.9 million that we put on there, but, but no, that, that, because that is part of the budget that's being adopted.
Okay, so when we're adopting the budget, we're agreeing then to use the 11.9 million out of that economic?
To give visibility to use that with our goal to use as little as possible. That's, that's exactly right.
I like the way you say that, but as you and I talked earlier, hope is not a strategy.
No, sure.
So we, we just want to be realistic about what we're going to spend. I'm just trying to understand what, what we're going to spend.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so we're making these changes to the fund balance so that we have, so that y'all have available to you the 11.9 million that we'll need to take out of the fund balance in order to make our budget balance for this coming fiscal year, is what we're anticipating.
Correct.
Okay, and the, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up are the proposed budget amendments. Do we have questions about these? It's item E3.
That's page 48.
Proposed budget amendments. Next, we are going to review proposed donations exceeding $10,000. We have one non-cash donation. Ridge Point High School Booster Club donated a new scoreboard for the school softball field valued at $27,000. Do we have questions from the board? Okay, next up are the proposed purchases exceeding $50,000. First up is the universal screening for mathematics and reading. First up is the universal screening for mathematics and reading. Do we have questions on this item? Okay, next, next up is the child nutrition and general food bid and the related items with that. Do we have questions on this item? All right, item 5C is the child nutrition snack and beverage bid and items related to that. Do we have questions? Thank you, Ms. Stotler, for being here. All right, item 5D, school buses, options, and parts. Do we have questions on the buses? All right, item 5E, fuel lubricants. Questions on the fuel lubricants? And next up are the tires, tubes, and automotive parts and supplies. It is great. Any questions? Tires, tubes, or automotive parts. Somebody loves this, right, Mr. Rasfield? He loves it. All right, how about industrial equipment for rental and purchase? No questions on this one? Maintenance, repair, and operations supplies and equipment. All right, moving on to our next item is office supplies, copy paper, and toner. This is one of my personal favorites. It's like pencils and toilet paper, right? Any questions on the office supplies, copy paper? Okay, architectural design services for the IT closet, cooling, and environment. We saw some of this when we visited, when we visited last month. Okay, any questions on this one? Next up are fundraising consultant services. Any questions on these, on this one? 5L, financial advisor services. I thought that's what you did. Mr. Viasenor, huh? Okay, next up are temporary clerical staff. Any questions on the temp staff? And then finally, E N is the frontline technologies A S O P. Questions on this one? Okay, now we're under other. Item F1A is renewal of an agreement between Fort Bend and PASA for demographic services and updates. Questions on this one? And then B is our inter-local project agreement with Fort Bend and Fort Bend County for the parking lot at Mission Bend Elementary. Questions on this one? All right, agreement for professional services with DBR Engineering Consultants regarding the electrical service upgrade projects. Any questions on this one? We have defined electric easement agreements between Fort Bend and Center Point for the Dulles Complex. Do you have questions on this one? And E is an inter-local agreement with Fort Bend and Missouri City to accomplish mutually beneficial projects, which means?
It's being good neighbors, and there's, as you can see in the item, there's just a wide variety of mutually beneficial projects.
Sidewalks, ramps, ADA ramps. Any questions? Okay, and then finally, we have review the minutes from previous meetings. Do you have questions on the minutes? Finally, do we have any audience members who would like to respond or comment on the agenda items? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Get that, Jane?
I did.